Our council member Ron Washington has our prayer and pledge this evening. Mr. Washington.
Mayor Bragg and citizens, join me for a moment's hours, please. Amen.
Amen.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council, June 9th, 2011. A couple of announcements. First of all, there will be a Country in My Blood Murfreesboro Donor Day, a blood drive at Patterson Park Community Center, and that'll be Tuesday, June 21st, from noon till 6:00 PM at Patterson Park, located in the gym. And if you want to schedule an appointment to do that, sometimes there are a little bit of a line, but if you want to make sure that your timing is right, you can go to www.redcrossblood.org and enter the sponsor code MURFREESBURROW19. And that way you can schedule an appointment to have your blood donor done at that time. And it's actually a good, efficient way to do that, and certainly we want to support the Red Cross, obviously with the number of storms and people in need with injuries and all. This would be a good time to give back to the community through this blood drive, Tuesday, June 21st, noon till 6:00, at Patterson Park. If you need some more information on that, you can call the mayor's office at 849-2629. Also, council members, I have put on your desk a conference-at-a-glance listing of the events at our Tennessee Municipal League, which for the first time is meeting in Murfreesboro, Tennessee. We are a good, solid, strong place to have statewide meetings, and our municipal league has realized that. For many years, they have rotated between the Big Four cities in Tennessee, and then they go to Gatlinburg every fifth year, but this year they come into Murfreesboro. So I entreat you and ask you if you want to, to please participate in any of those activities. If you need some registration information, certainly let me know. But we're proud to welcome our Tennessee Municipal League to Murfreesboro, and they'll be here from -- the boards are going to meet Friday and Saturday, and then Sunday starts the full slate of activities and finish up on Tuesday morning. So I encourage you to visit and certainly to welcome, on behalf of our community, all the city officials and who come to the Tennessee Municipal League meeting. It's a great meeting, and we've always been a member, and I think they'll have a great time at our Embassy Suite and our other hotels and restaurants and shopping venues in Murfreesboro. So I hope everybody will take advantage of that opportunity. You have before you your consent agenda. Looks like a number of items on that. If you've had an opportunity to look through there, are there any questions regarding the consent agenda?
Mayor, if there's no questions, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, you have a motion, second, to approve the consent agenda. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on May 16th of 2011, we'll now conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately 1.6 acres east of New Salem Highway, State Route 99, and north of West Main Street from single-family residential eight, RS8 District, to Highway Commercial, CH District. Wendell T. Jones is the applicant. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the May 22nd, 2011 issue of the local newspaper. Ms. Ely, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg, and thank you, city council members. Our first public hearing this evening is to consider rezoning property that's located just north of West Main Street and along the eastern side of Highway 99 or New Salem Highway. It's shaded in orange on the map that's on the screens, and that's in your packets as well. His zoning request is for one parcel that's currently vacant land and is zoned RS8, which is single-family residential district. Previously, this was four parcels, four separate parcels, each with a single-family house, but sometime last year, the applicant removed the house and then, at the urging of staff, recorded a subdivision plot to combine these four lots into one lot to show that his intention is not to develop small residential lots and try to fit something commercial on there, but to come to us with a plan in the future for a use that would be permitted under the commercial highway zoning. He does not have any plans at this time or specific users in mind. However, he believes that the CH zoning would be appropriate because the properties to the north is the Thornton's Gas Station, and it's zoned CH. The properties to the west are zoned CH as well. The property that's just to the east, along the north side of West Main Street, is zoned RM16, and there's a small apartment complex there. And to the south, across West Main Street, the properties are zoned RS8 and are developed city single-family subdivisions. So this parcel is separated from that subdivision to the south physically by the street and is closest to a gas station apartment, so his request is to rezone the property, which is 1.6 acres from single-family residential district RS8 to CH Highway Commercial District. The Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing, and they recommended approval of this rezoning request unanimously. There were five members present that evening, Mr. Gilli not being one of them, but Mr. Young was there. So it was a unanimous vote. All voted in favor. Mr. Matt Taylor represents the applicant. He's in the audience this evening. If you have any questions or would like some further explanations, he is available. But there is no presentation for this, so staff will be glad to answer questions whenever you may have them. Mr. Taylor is available, but you should conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning this property to CH Highway Commercial District.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Ely. Any questions for Ms. Ely before I open the public hearing? If not, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Is anyone here wishing to speak for or against this rezoning? Would you please step to the microphone and give us your name and address? Is anyone here wishing to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time, and we'll consider for passage on first reading and ordinance to rezone an area east of New Salem Highway and north of West Main Street to Highway Commercial, CH District.
Mayor, move for passage on first reading. Second.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Mr. Bratcher, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on May 16th, 2011, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning a total of 11.6 acres located east of South Rutherford Boulevard and north of Chalice Drive, with approximately 1.0 acres rezoned from General Office Residential, OGR District to Commercial Highway District, approximately 8.4 acres rezoned from Residential Multifamily 16 District to Commercial Highway, CH District, and approximately 2.2 acres rezoned from Single Family Residential 10, RS10 District to Commercial Highway, CH District. Hearthwood Development LLC is the applicant, and the notice of the said public hearing was published in the May 22nd, 2011 issue of the local newspaper. Ms. Ely.
Thank you again. The second public hearing this evening is to consider rezoning some property located along the eastern side of South Rutherford Boulevard, which is shaded in the map that's before you and on the screen, from the three current zones, which are OGR, General Office District Residential, RM16, Multifamily Residential District, and RS10, Single Family Residential District. The bulk of the property is zoned RM16, and then there's a smaller 2.2 acre portion, which is zoned RS10, and then a small 1 acre portion, which is OGR. The properties to the east are in the unincorporated area of Rutherford County and is currently farmland. To the north is some property that's zoned RS15, that's an interim zone at this time. Just north of that RS15 zone is, you can see, PCD, just on the north of the map. That's the location of the Walmart Supercenter. This would be the other Walmart, the second Walmart in Murfreesboro. This property is across from Haven Drive. There's also many storage or self-storage facilities on PCD located along the western side of South Rutherford Boulevard. To the northwest are a couple apartment communities. To the south is some vacant undeveloped land, however, there is an application, a rezoning application pending. It'll be before Planning Commission, or it's already been before Planning Commission, but it'll be before City Council, probably within the next month or so. So although the property to the south is currently zoned RS10 and used as agricultural land, there's a proposed change in that use. But just south of that property are some developed single-family subdivisions and those you can see along Chalice Drive. The property owner has requested the Planning Commission rezone the properties to CH Highway Commercial District. The applicant has not indicated that he has any firm plans on what they'd like to construct here, but there has in the past, since you can see the majority of the property is zoned multifamily. He had submitted in the past a plan to develop the property with some apartments. The plan didn't work. It didn't work for our water sewer department. Actually, they were unable to serve that. So although the applicant was willing and actually desired to develop apartments there, that wasn't the best use for the property. So the developer has been in communications with our Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department to continue discussions about sewer services property, and they are of the opinion that a commercial use is less intensive on our sewer systems than that of a apartment or multifamily residential apartment community that requires more capacity. And so I think there's a consensus that they will be able to serve property if it were zoned CH Highway Commercial District. The Planning Commission, again, did hold a public hearing and recommend rezoning of this property unanimously, and that would be rezoning of all three portions, the OGR, the RM16, and the RS10 property to CH Highway Commercial District. There's a representative of the applicant in our audience this evening, so if you have any questions from him, he's available. And of course, as always, if you have any questions from me, I'd be glad to answer them at any time. But you should conduct a public hearing before considering rezoning the properties to CH Highway Commercial District.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Ely. Are there any questions for Ms. Ely regarding this proposal? Any questions before I open the public hearing? If not, then I'll open the public hearing at this time, and anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning, please step to the microphone and give us your name and address. Is anyone here wishing to speak for or against? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time, and we'll consider for passage on first reading and ordinance to rezoning a total of 11.6 acres located east of South Rutherford Boulevard and north of Chalice Drive to Commercial Highway, CH District.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. A motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on May 16th, 2011, we'll now conduct a public hearing to consider a proposed amendment to the planned signage overlay, PSO District, located north of Medical Center Parkway and east of North Thompson Lane. Middle Tennessee Medical Center is the applicant. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the May 22nd, 2011 issue of a local newspaper. Welcome, Ms. Logan.
Good evening, Mayor Bragg. Thank you, members of the council. This item before you tonight is an amendment for the hospital, PSO. If you'll recall, the planned signage overlay district is an opportunity for the hospital to incorporate a cohesive signage plan for their campus. We have two other PSOs in the city of Murfreesboro, Stones River Mall and the Avenue Development. And this is the third one that we adopted, and it has worked well for this property. They want to amend it tonight to come in with some new improvements to the property that we're working on currently for Phase Four, and that includes quite a few streetscape improvements, parking lot improvements, et cetera. And this amendment will include adding the 2.2 acres that the city recently sold to NTMC at the corner of Gateway Boulevard and North Thompson Lane. This will incorporate that plan into their campus and incorporate their signage plan into their planned signage overlay district. In addition, they are making a couple of changes. They're going to change a couple of bronze face signs to a white face signs and use white bronze lettering because they've found that it reflects better. In addition, they also want to add a secondary entrance sign to the Seton Building, which is currently under construction. There'd be two main signs there, whereas currently, MOB1, there's only one. The reason they want to do that is that they're adding, they have added a secondary canopy to that building, and that will become the Cancer Center. They want to make sure that it's very aware to people who are visiting the site exactly which entrance is the appropriate entrance to visit into the building. In addition, they're also going to add a corner feature that we're working on with them right now in the design at the corner of North Thompson and Gateway. It'll be similar somewhat to the signs that we've been working on in our streetscape plans throughout the Gateway and our sign walls, but will also, at the same time, be reflective of the signs that they've used on their campus. Those are the major overall changes that are being proposed for you tonight, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Ms. Logan regarding this recommendation? Any questions? If not, then I'll open the public hearing, and anyone wishing to speak for or against this proposed amendment to their planned signage overlay, please step to the microphone and give us your name and address. Is anyone here wishing to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time, and we'll consider for passage on first reading and ordinance to amend the planned signage overlay, PSO District, located north of Medical Center Parkway and east of North Thompson Lane.
So moved.
Second. All right, you have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Pursuant to the provisions of TCA 6-56-206 and the city charter, we'll now conduct a public hearing to consider the 2011-2012 City of Murfreesboro Tentative Budget. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the May 29th, 2011 issue of a local newspaper. Anyone here wishing to speak for or against or about our tentative budget for the City of Murfreesboro, 2011 to 2012? Please step to the microphone, give us your name and address.
Thank you. My name is Bill Durkin. I live at 7119 Hudson Road in Christiana, or as we call it, Rockville.
Okay.
And good evening, everybody. I'll see if you have met me before. Mr. Mayor, councilmember, city staff, honored guest, fellow employees, chief gangs, deputy chief teams, and our citizens watching at home. My name is Bill Durkin. I'm a fireman, EMT on B shift, as well as the president of the Murfreesboro Firefighters Association. I thank you for the opportunity to comment on the city's proposed budget as it relates to our fire department. I can say with confidence that the overwhelming sentiment of our membership is that the 3.5% proposed raise is barely going to keep our heads above water. I would like to suggest a 5% pay raise would be more in line with the increased costs that our citizens and our employees face. There are several firefighters in our city who are currently legitimately eligible to collect food stamps benefits. I have restrained from sharing this information with the city, but I think this is an appropriate time. That is an absolute fact, and I am frequently made aware of that. Our membership has been unhappy with the current firefighter pay scale since its inception, and a new pay scale study is sure to prove this out on paper when comparing us to some of departments in our region. I would be remiss in my duties if I were not, again, point this out. On a happier note, under the budgetary section marked "Departmental Goals," we are encouraged to see that one is, quote, "begin study of a training facility to help maintain the ISO Class II rating and to facilitate training of personnel," unquote. We believe that this must be carried out to completion as outlined in the five-year capital plan, and that a modern, local training facility be constructed before we engage in the acquisition of heavy rescue units and the highly dangerous technical rescue activities that they will provide. Firefighting is a team and a contact sport. It is essential that we are able to conduct multi-company training in a local venue that allows us to respond, if needed, in the city limits. High-angle rescue in particular is an activity with little, if any, margin of error. Like all firefighting activities, it requires proficiency brought about by continual team practice. This will require a dedicated training facility designed to safely acquire and practice these new skills. Successful fire prevention efforts nationwide have led to a dramatic reduction in structured fires, which we are very proud of in the Fire Zeros. This has created the circumstance where we fight less fires and are losing valuable practical experience. We can help make up this knowledge gap by training. We also suggest that any new training facility be run by our most experienced training officers, those with the most practical firefighting backgrounds. And we ask that we please don't drop the ball on this. This is a word about, over the years, and it's never really come to fruition, and it's a constant concern of our senior members. As we have made known in our city manager's excellent roundtable forums, our department's weakest link remains our radio communications. On a daily basis, communications are garbled, and in particular, wet radios fail our needs. Many of our members carry cell phones in their turnout gear so that they can call a mayday if their radios fail. Imagine being a fireman on duty and having to call 911 for assistance with your life at stake. And if I may point out, there was a recent double firefighter fatality in San Francisco, and if you listen to the radio traffic, it's a very chilling and sobering thing because the mayday call is over like that. And the next thing you hear is the dispatcher describing two third-degree firemen burnt in an ambulance. It's a very sobering piece of radio, and I suggest everyone look it up on YouTube. We have also requested fire-specific dispatchers who are recruited and trained to handle the unique communications needs of our firefighters. We believe that this will also make us a safer and more efficient fire department to better protect ourselves and the citizens we serve. And again, this came out in the city manager's excellent roundtable, and I know our dispatch do the best job they can, but the fire service and the police activity is a little bit different, and there are some times when there's been some communication lapses that we'd really like to see corrected. But thank you for your time. We look forward to our department's improvements in this area, and we wish you all a safe and happy summer season.
Thank you.
Got any questions?
Thank you.
At your service. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Others wishing to speak regarding the tentative budget for the City of Murfreesboro, 2011 through 2012? Anyone else? Anyone at all? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time, and we'll consider any other changes to the City of Murfreesboro 2011-2012 tentative budget. Mr. Lyons.
Mayor Bragg provided you a memo that tries to walk you through several of the items that have come up during your budget review. I've tried to number those so it'll be easy to follow. The first recommendations have to deal with amendments that you've already reviewed. These were reviewed during your budget sessions. There are items number one through six on page one of my memorandum. You indicated consensus and agreement, but we did not make those formal changes until after your budget public hearing was conducted. Certainly be glad to answer questions about what is in Recommendation 1, but we have already discussed those.
All right. Any questions regarding that recommendation?
Mayor might suggest we take these in pieces so we can keep track of it?
Mayor, I move that we approve amendments number one, items one through six, as noted in our information. Is that okay, Ms. McGinn?
We can do it that way. You know.
Is that all right?
Yes, sir.
All right. I'll make sure we do it the right way. All right, there is a motion to approve one through six on page one of the June 7th, 2011 proposed budget follow-up information. Everybody has that in front of them?
I'll second that motion, Mayor.
All right, we have a motion and second. Are there any questions on that motion? If not, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
Mayor, the next item has to do with the Community Development Fund and the Emergency Shelter Grant. This is a grant the city has received for a number of years. It is a pass-through grant. The time the budget was prepared, we did not have the grant, but it has since been indicated that the city will receive it. The grant amount is $111,482. There is a table on page two that describes the agencies that would be recipients of this pass-through grant, and it would be our recommendation that you include that in your budget in Recommendation 2.1.
All right, any questions for Mr. Lyons on this recommendation, 2.1, on page two? If not, is...
Mayor, I move we approve the recommendation, 2.1, as recommended by our city manager.
Second. All right, a motion and second. Any questions on the motion? Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
Recommendation 2.2 has to do with a fire and rescue department generator grant. State law requires the services of an architect and engineer for this project. Those fees are estimated to be $13,000. Now, the amount of the grant hasn't changed, but the city's match would need to include those services. So in Recommendation 2.2, the suggestion would be that the grant line item be increased from $108,300 to $121,300. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Lyons regarding this inclusion of the fees for an architect, engineer, as required by state law?
Mayor, if there's no discussion, I move we approve Recommendation 2.2. Second.
All right, motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
Mayor, the next section has to deal with other information that you potentially may consider for amendments, and the first has to deal with part-time pay increase. As you're aware, the proposed budget that I submitted to you included a 25 cent per hour increase for all part-time employees. The total cost of that recommendation was about $65,000. As we reviewed the budget, there were some questions, and what we'd like to do is, I'd like to cover part of this. I'll kind of go over who is a part-time employee with the city because they certainly do a wide variety of things, and then Mr. Crumley has put a memo before you that's going to talk a little bit about the application of this. So let me just take two minutes and talk a little bit about the part-time employees of the city. They certainly do an outstanding job, and we do rely on them, but it is very varied in terms of what they do. So let me just take a few minutes and talk about what that looks like. We've got in the budget 392 part-time employees. Almost two-thirds of these are in Parks and Recreation. There is a variety of types of part-time positions with the city. There are everything from a laborer to a nurse, a video journalist, bus driver, golf marshal, shop clerk. We use them in a lot of different places. The hours that they work are varied. We have some part-time employees who are with us year-round. They may work a 52-week schedule. There are others that just work a season for us. For instance, the pool at Sportscom, the pool outside, is open just during the summertime, so we'll bring lifeguards on part-time that work just during that summer season. There's other seasons with the city, leaf pickup, work at our golf course that really depends on the weather and the time of year. So we use our part-time employees to supplement work that needs to be done, that's not done by our full-time employees. And also tenure with the city. We have some part-time employees that work just for one summer before they go back to high school. We've got other part-time employees that have been with us many, many years. And lastly, the hourly rates. Minimum wage, I believe, is $7.25, but our entry level part-time pay is at $7.50, and it does range all the way up to $20.25 per hour. Those are the numbers before the 25 cent increase. And additionally, we've got some other part-time that are paid a fixed amount, our school crossing guards, for instance, the umpires and scorekeepers, all of which are paid a lump sum amount as opposed to an hourly rate. Page four, I try to outline what the cost estimates would be. This was something Mrs. Harris had asked... lump sum amount as opposed to an hourly rate. Page four, I try to outline what the cost estimates would be. This was something Mrs. Harris had asked us at the meeting. The three-and-a-half percent increase across the board is actually almost $88,000 more than what we're paying this year, but the budget already included the $64,000 increase for the 25 cent per hour. So let me say that again, the budget that we included for you. We believe, our memory is, is that this is the largest part-time pay increase we've offered, and that cost was $64,000. Now, to go over and above what that is, and that was the question Mrs. Harris had asked two weeks ago, to take all of our part-time employees up to a three-and-a-half percent increase is an additional $23,000. Mr. Crumley has got, I think, some information he wanted to share with you as well.
Mr. Crumley, welcome.
You should have a memo at your station with a couple of points that came up today. Staff has done a tremendous amount of effort into trying to look at our part-time labor force, how we use them, and the wide, wide variety of uses. As Rob mentioned earlier, two-thirds of our part-time people work in Park and Recreation, and thanks to Lanny and his team, we got Park and Recreation's very, very detailed information today. In looking at, there's a couple of things that came out of that information. The first one of those, and it comes from the good institutional memory of some of our department heads, is that we did away with cost-of-living pay increases several years ago and moved the city into a market-rate base of pay. The classification study, we look at a number of communities, both locally and regionally, and determine what the market rate for the types of labor and skills that we employ should be, and that's where we establish our pay scales. City Council chose 60% of that market basket rate rather than going with an average, and the current update, just finished about six weeks ago, is what supports the three-and-a-half percent raise for full-time employees in this budget presentation. We have no market-rate basket for part-time employees. We don't look at part-time employees in quite the same way. Where we have no market-rate study, we do have lots of experience in hiring and retaining part-time employees. We surveyed our department heads, and what we found is, we are not having difficulty, with one exception, finding the type of talent willing to work for the amount of pay and willing to work for the number of hours that we need them. Previously, in city budgets, when council adjusted the pay of part-time people, it was usually piecemeal, where we were having difficulty recruiting talent and people into those particular job slots. Currently, we are not experiencing that. We are having some trouble finding lifeguards, but that is really more of a time of the year when school starts back, seasonal employment effort than it is what we are offering for pay for lifeguards. Point number one, we don't have, we fear we may be setting a precedent in terms of going back and looking at cost-of-living as a justification for a part-time pay increase. Second thing, the wide variety of jobs, hours worked, in Lanny's over 300 part-time employees, we started looking at, well, where can we draw a line to begin classifying folks as year-round part-time versus seasonal part-time? How many hours do you want to constitute a division point between a person that gets a higher percentage raise and a person that gets a flat 25 cent an hour raise? No matter where we looked at setting that line, we caused an inequity in the workforce. No fewer than six examples that came out in Lanny's part-time workforce where we could have two part-time employees, same job titles, performing the same jobs in instances at the same time in the same room, and we would differentiate their rate of pay based on the number of hours that we scheduled them to work every week. While we don't find that to be any problem with the labor laws, we just think that's a huge inequitable situation to put two people together in the same room doing the same thing, paid differently. It'll cause more problems for our management team than we really believe setting that hard line of how many hours is a full-time, part-time, and how many hours is a part-time, part-time. So our recommendation to you is, whatever you choose to do for part-time employees, whether it's a 25 cent an hour or a percentage of some type, do it across the board for all of them. Keep some of these little inequities that are inevitably going to pop up in a very broad and very diverse part-time workforce from occurring. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Crumley? Ms. Harris?
Couple of questions. Is there, have we ever spelled out a difference by definition in part-time year-round versus part-time, part-time seasonal?
No, ma'am. We don't have that definition currently in any of our employment policies.
So can we make a recommendation in the employee's handbook that we do spell out the definition of part-time?
I think that is a proper recommendation, that we spend some time perhaps trying to figure out how to better classify our part-time people.
I'm just, by definition of handbook, I'm not trying to change the rule. I was just saying to an employee when they're looking in the handbook...
We thought, we thought it might be simpler than it really is. It's a very, very complicated task when you start looking at how many part-time people we employ, how many hours we work them, and where their skills are the same in crossover. But I think absolutely it's something that we could study.
I think for future reference, that might be something to bring some information on to see about potential definitions to clearly delineate, because even comments that we've gotten from the public about what to do with the part-time employees, I think there's been a general overview from public comment of seeing a distinction between those part-time employees that are here year-round as opposed to the generic late-term of seasonal employees. And I think if we can look at potentially coming up with definitions for those for future situations like this, I think that would be very helpful.
So we're saying permanent, for the lack of term, because we don't have anything in the handbook, let's say, permanent part-time employees...
Just have year-round. How about year-round?
That's good.
And then you have seasonal.
Okay, so we're saying that those employees will get the 3.5, and then the seasonal, the 25 cents?
Currently, your budget is predicated on all of those part-time people getting 25 cents an hour increase.
So are you recommending that we do the year-round and the seasonal?
Well, since...
Differently?
Yes, sir. I am.
So the year-round, I want to make sure, because as we began to analyze this, it really became complicated. The year-round, does that mean they work 52 weeks out of the year? Does that mean they work a little bit each month? The schedules, there's so many of them working so many different places and so many different worktimes, it gets to be very slippery about how you define that. That's why we started to take a look at the permanent part-time, which is kind of something we've talked about, but that you can't find it anywhere in the handbook, you can't find it anywhere in our Human Resource Department. And when we drew that line at 25 hours per week, we found employees with the same title that averaged 25.2 hours per week that would get the three-and-a-half percent, and we found other employees that averaged 24-point-something hours per week and would just get the quarter raise. So wherever you draw that line, there's always going to be somebody just below it. And so when we say define, that's why Mr. Crumley was saying, we may want to step back and look at this to say, what does year-round mean? Because if somebody works two hours a week year-round, is that somebody that's year-round? It's not simple.
I thought we would, maybe, I thought part-time year-round was working 52 weeks with approximately 25 hours minimum.
That's what we had began to analyze, Ms. Harris, but it became problematic because we saw some equity issues that Mr. Crumley just spoke to, that if you draw it at 25 hours, there were employees that were just a tiny bit above 25 hours that would qualify under that scenario for three-and-a-half percent, and there were employees an equal amount just under it that would just get the 25 cent per hour, doing the same job at the same time in the same building, and we didn't see that as equitable.
There were people who were working 52 weeks a year, were working just under the 25 hours, and they wouldn't, doing the same job side by side, but one employee would get the three-and-a-half, and the other would get the 25 cents. Is that what you said?
We found, we found six of those instances in Park and Rec where, just on the way they're scheduled, one employee was in excess of the 25 hours, the other was less than the 25 hours. We've found employees scheduled to work as few as four hours a month, and others that are scheduled to work 30 hours a month.
Mr. Gilli.
Mayor, thank you. Rob and Jim, I think what we've come to is, we've got two scenarios and perhaps a hybrid. And before seeing the memo that was laid before tonight, we had the one scenario that we were looking at versus the hybrid. The one scenario was the 25 cents versus three-and-a-half percent across the board with the proposed hybrid of using the working definition that was in, Rob, your memo that we got prior to tonight, that gave the proposed definition, if you will, of 52, 52 weeks, 25 hours, is defining, whether we call them permanent part-time or year-round, part-time versus seasonal. And had we gone with that hybrid, or if we go with a hybrid approach like that, that was going to add about $5,000 to the budget. But based on what, Jim, what you're telling me, telling us right now, is having looked at that a little bit further, that until we come up with some more delineated definitions of those, that's going to cause a bigger inequity than if we just pick between the 25 cents an hour or the three-and-a-half percent raise across the board for both permanent part-time year-round and the seasonal. And what you're recommending is, instead of taking that hybrid approach, if we're wanting to do more than the 25 cents on the hour, is that we go the full gamut to the three-and-a-half percent across the board, and then take, for this year, and then we'll take the time to study and come up with some delineations and definitions as to how we break those categories of part-time employees down for future scenarios that we're looking at. Is that the bottom line?
That is exactly right. We're saying two things. Market basket approach, the market rate approach is not broken. We're not having difficulty hiring part-time folks. And the other side is, treat them all the same. The management problems we create for ourselves by not treating them the same probably is not worth the money that is involved in the difference.
And the issues, the issues that have arisen, there's outlined in your memo that's on our desk right now, with that hybrid approach, as I'm calling it, came to light as you were further researching it after we got what was in our packet for us to review prior to coming here tonight.
Until we got Park and Recreation's data this morning, we just did not see those problems in the rest of the workforce.
Vice Mayor.
Mayor, you know, I understand what Mr. Gilli is saying, but it sounds pretty complicated. I'm going to keep this as simple as we can, and we start creating a lot of problems for staff, a lot of problems for bookkeeping, and I mean, it gets to be, you know, pretty complicated. And, you know, it seems pretty simple. If you give someone a 25 cent pay raise, those who work more make more. Those who are here more and work more hours, they make more money than those who are in all shift drives with the 25 cents an hour. I mean, that's kind of the way I see it, and if it needs to be more than 25 cents, then those who make, those who work 25 hours per week, 52 weeks a year, they will make more money than those who are temporary part-time, if you will. You know, and it won't be as difficult for us to keep up with it. We start giving percentage raises on 292 part-time employees who all work different hours in different departments and make different pay rates. I mean, that, that sounds like that's a, we may have to hire more people just to administer that. I mean, I, you know, I just, I want to keep, I want to do what's right because we all, our part-time employees are very important to us, and they keep our city running smoothly, but I don't want to create another department or hire more employees at the city that we need for, you know, for part-time employees. No, that's just kind of what my thumbnail thought is on that.
Mr. McFarland.
Jim, or Mr. Crumley, something that I've looked at, all the information that we've given, and this is what I'm more concerned about. If we need to, if we need, you know, I think, just like we've done with our pay study where we're recommended that we see areas that need improvement, that we improve those areas. The thing that I'm most concerned, and Ms. Gels, I understand for bringing this up, we have no information on what the market is for part-time employees except for what our department heads tell us. So what scares me more than anything, you know, we're told that government is overreaching and that we set the standard for what's, you know, we're setting the standard for what part-time employees are for the city. So what happens if we're setting part-time employees out of the market? So when you talk about the rising tide with the 25 cents, we're, what scares me is that until we have information showing us what the market is on certain part-time positions, we're going to price the city above and beyond maybe where the market is. And so in turn, we're hurting our residents. So, I mean, I don't mind if it's something that we need to make an adjustment, and what we're doing is not enough, I'm off, I'll be the first in line to say, absolutely, let's raise it. But, I mean, we don't have any, we're just guessing up here with no information, and we could be doing more damage by giving the, whether it's full-time, or not full-time, whether it's year-round part-time, or whether it's seasonal part-time, we could be doing more damage than what we, by giving a three-and-a-half percent raise than not giving three-and-a-half percent raise. If we need to, I'm for it. But can we get more information to show us that, you know, what the, what the market is on a part-time position, that, you know, if we're hiring a lifeguard at $8 or $8.50 an hour, that, you know, other people hire lifeguards at $10 an hour, so we do need to be paying more. But at the same time, I don't think we need to be hiring a seasonal worker at $15 an hour when the market is $10 an hour. I mean, that doesn't seem like we're...
That's exactly what we've been doing in the past. We've been taking it on a case-by-case basis, and it, you know, if the market says, if the Parks and Rec says, the market says that lifeguards make $10 an hour, and that's what we're hiring them at, then that's what was brought to the City Manager, and that's what we did. We addressed it on a, on a case-by-case, part-time basis, and that seemed, it serves us, it has served us pretty well in the past. I don't know for any, like I said, for any issues or gland problems, I haven't, it hasn't been brought to my attention. And it, and they crop up from time to time. They do, we have had some in the past, but we've addressed them.
And we've brought those to you on a case-by-case basis. And what was different this year was, it has been several years, and we said, let's give all employees a 25 cent per hour increase. It is the largest, you know, part-time pay increase that we can recall bringing to you.
I can't ever remember across the board, pay increase for part-time employees, and I've been here a couple of years.
I think we, I think we look too much at what we've done in the past. I think we need to deal more with the here and now. In the past, the economy wasn't anything like it is now. Right now, we are dealing with, we have no definition whatsoever when we're talking about part-time people. I just don't see the fairness across the board. I know we keep saying we have no problem with replacing these part-time people. We won't have a problem because people are living paycheck to paycheck, some people can't even meet bills, so people are doing everything to try to get a job today. We talk about it's a great city, and it is a great city, but we have full-time employees right now that work on food stamps, working two or three, two and three jobs. And we talk about the quality of life here in Murfreesboro, and we have people who would love to take their kids to the Sportscom or wherever, they can't afford to, so we are, I just don't agree with it, but just one voice.
Any other comments or questions?
Well, I think, you know, I hear what Ms. Gels, and I think we all want to pay all our employees, and most we can pay them. And I think our citizens want us to do that. You know, we're coming off of the last several years of probably some of the worst economy and worst economic times that we've ever witnessed that I, that I know. You know, and, and as I think was mentioned, we're giving a three-and-a-half percent pay raise to our full-time employees. I'd like to see us do more for them, you know, but we're doing all we can do. doing all we can do in trying to maintain the, the services that our citizens expect and what they're willing to pay for. Because I, I haven't forgotten that those various citizens that we serve who pay full-time employees, part-time employees, who pays, they're the ones who pays the bills. And they are coming off of very tough economic times themselves. A lot of them are hurt. A lot of, a lot of those haven't had a raise in a long time. A lot of them have lost their jobs. A lot of them have lost their homes. I saw on the news and I just said, one in ever eight houses in the area were either in foreclosure or were probably going foreclosure. I think, I think we've done a great job in the city of Murfreesboro. We hadn't raised taxes in
Thirteen.
13 straight years. We continue to provide services to our citizens that they expect. And, and we've given raises to our full-time and our part-time employees. I think that Mayor Council and staff have been committed for that. I, I'm proud of that fact. I, I'm proud of this budget.
I'm proud of the fact, too. I, I agree with that. But if the city continues to grow.
You know, one thing that we talked about earlier, you know, we, we pay our city employees that they, I think they make a decent wage. And one of the facts, Mr. Lyons, you may want to point out, what we pay as benefits, the cost of each employee, the average cost, not the top or not the bottom, but the average cost of every city employee that we pay on top of their salary, what is that figure?
Yeah, we're going to pay for retirement, for health insurance, for social security taxes, the city's piece of that, wellness programs, accidental death and dismemberment, life insurance. You know, on average, I think our, our benefit load's about 44 percent of an employee's pay, so.
Is there an average cost? Is it, do you know what that dollar figure is? Is it, I, I'd read somewhere it was like 20, 28, 27, 28,000?
Yes.
27, 28,000 per employee in addition to their salary that we're, that, that our citizens are paying for benefits for our employees.
Yes. And the city's got an outstanding benefit package and something council ought to be very proud of.
So what you're saying is, just when we're looking at our budget, when we're looking at individual salaries and we're going through our salary schedule, if you look at benefits, you can, on the average employee, you can add $28,000 to somebody's salary to see what their true, their true employment package is.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gilli.
Mayor, I was going to, if my math is, is right, Rob and Melissa, you may be the one to correct me on this, the quarter an hour comes out to right at about, if we take the average of what we're, you look at the total amount that we're paying part-time employees, the current, at the 2.5 million, that comes out roughly to the equivalent of an overall 3 percent of, of what that figure is, correct?
Yes. And on the, you know, the entry level part-time positions, you're getting in the very, very close to the neighborhood of a 3.5 percent increase.
You're coming close to that. The issue that we keep talking about is there's the distinction between the part-time and the full-time, and that's why we've, lots of distinctions between that. And that's one of the reasons we try to keep the per-hour increase as opposed to the, the percentages as you're doing otherwise. What I would like to potentially throw out there, based on, on the numbers that we've got, is that, one, that for future reference, you go ahead and, and staff, look at coming up with those definitions that we're talking about so that we can look at these issues in, in future years as to how we classify seasonal versus year-round, whatever other terms of arts the industry may use. But if instead of a quarter an hour raise, if we did a 30 cents an hour raise, that comes out to roughly an average of almost the 3.5 percent across the board for all the part-time employees, reaching Ms. Harris's goal, but at the same time, still maintaining the distinction of utilizing hourly pay rates versus across-the-board percentages for our, for our employees.
And that's just a suggestion I would like to throw out there, that, that we bump up the amount per hour instead of looking at it from percentage, and that 30 cents actually comes out to roughly 3.5 percent across the board to the, to the part-time employees this year.
I think it's, I think it's much more simpler than trying to apply the percentage increase across the board because all the variations from every, for all employees, from their times and, and different pay scales for all the part-time employees. I think it's much simpler for staff and much simpler for us to implement just across the board like we, like we'd recommend it. And if, and if it accomplishes the 3.5 percent, then that's fine.
And actually, some of those entry levels will end up coming out if that, if you average that out to just slightly above 3.5 percent, the ones that are a little higher on the pay scale, they're going to be right about that 3.5 percent mark that the full-time employees are getting. But if my math is right.
You're right. That puts the entry level position at 4.1 percent. So it'd be an increase on our, on our, on our entry level positions, but a little less for the, the higher, higher hourly positions.
And then we're still not creating that expectation until we come up with these definitions as to what seasonal versus regular full-time, that there's not a distinction as to how we, we come up with, with pay variances. If I'm making sense to everybody else with that.
It makes a lot of sense.
I like that. I just don't ever, ever want us to make our employees no difference as far as fairness. And with the economy like it, like it is, I like that proposal, Mr. Gilli. I like being fair. I like that.
Well, I will put that in the form of a motion then, if clear enough for, for staff as an amendment to the budget.
All right. I'll second that motion.
All right, you have a motion and second.
Can we also ask that when we're looking at the definition between seasonal and year-round, that we also maybe do a, if it's possible, to do some sort of market study out there to see what the, so that way we've got more information when we're making these decisions that we can see what we're doing. You know, maybe if we can.
Well, let's, let's see. We'll, we'll see what, what's involved with that. That may be a little difficult. The full-time, it's hard enough to do a salary survey with full-time positions. The, the part-time get to be, let me see what we can, we can find out. I understand what you're trying to accomplish.
Part-time positions, the duties of what they do every day is so, it varies. You know, you're a part-time employee, you may be doing one job one day and you may be doing something totally different. And nothing matches up from city to city, from job description to job description.
It's hard to do that on, on some full-time positions. So the part-time would be even more of a challenge, but we'll, we'll kick around and see what we can find out.
Well, to, to define this, could, could, we agree that we're just going to go up on part-time 30 cents an hour?
Yeah.
And then if there's other information available on seasonal, permanent, year-round, whatever, for Chicago or Dyersburg or wherever else, if they've got, if they can find something that's good. Frankly, I mean, I, I understand the emotional appeal of this. I think we'd given a raise. If we weren't going to give a raise this year to our part-time people, we might not have even brought this up. Frankly, I don't like raising something up in competition with our private employers and, and other people who are getting work. It's, it's pretty hard to do. And most people probably criticize city salaries anyway. The exception may be the firefighters, but I, I really feel like that we've spent a lot of time looking at this. I think, I appreciate you giving us the opportunity to look at it, but I really think we just, let's go with the 30 cents if that would be an agreement to the council. And then if the staff can find something or some reason that we need to define seasonal or year-round or whatever else, then maybe we can do that.
Well, and a good thing is, I think it's always good to discuss this. And we've got 400 some odd part-time employees, but I think if you subtract that from roughly the 110,000 residents that we have in Murfreesboro, we still have 109,600 people that we have to answer to as well that we're going to talk to us. So I think that's something that we keep in mind, mind as well.
Mr. Gilli.
The other benefit to that, I think, proposal too, again, if my calculations are correct, what we started out with in the proposed budget, the overall increase for part-time was about 64,600. If we'd gone the opposite extreme, we was go to 87,700. Roughly by my math, the 30 cent proposal was going to cost the taxpayers 77,000 is so dead center almost of what those two, two opposite ends of the spectrum are. Does that sound about right?
Well, they'll have the number for us when we probably, when we get the second reading, so.
Yes, sir.
All right.
And I'd like to thank the staff for bringing that additional information and that extra time you spent. We really appreciate that. Really appreciate that.
All right. So, Mr. Gilli, if you would restate your motion.
Sure. My motion is we amend the budget to include a, an across-the-board 30 cent per hour raise to all part-time employees. And that's the formal motion, but along with that is direction to staff that they study and bring back to us information to later date regarding potential definitions and delineations as to subcategories, classifications, you will, of, of part-time employees. And I think also Mr. McFarland's suggestion regarding at least an informal study of market, what the market barriers, so to speak, for some of those jobs, as best staff can.
I'll, I'll second that motion, Mayor.
All right. Motion and second. Any questions regarding the motion? If not, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Mr. Lyons?
Um, Mayor, um, this is a change we've also talked about previously, but I wanted to make sure it was before you, and that is GASB 54. They have changed definitions about special revenue funds. It is going to cause several, what have been in the past, standalone funds to be relocated to the general fund. Now, this recommendation does not change the overall dollars expended, but it will show a larger general fund because these other funds will disappear. Those are going to include recreation, golf course, solid waste, airport, cable TV, and senior center. So those changes have already been incorporated into the budget ordinances and the, the dollar amounts, but want to make sure that you are aware of that. And if there were any questions, be happy to answer those.
Questions?
I want to clarify one thing. Airport is not included in that. It will stay a special revenue fund.
Airport is not. All right. All right. So that does not need a vote. Are there other changes or recommendations that need to be made at this time? Amendments to the budget that council members would wish to discuss at this time? I might bring to your attention that Mr. Lyons' salary is not increased in the current budget document, I believe that we have at this time. And if you would like to discuss the city manager's salary at this time, it'd be appropriate along with any other amendments you might have.
And Mayor, just, just for a point of information, I think, to the general public is that is by design, is that that position, the city manager's position, is the one position that the city manager doesn't, never places in the budget as a pay increase for himself. And that has always been left at the discretion of, of the council for us to bring up. And I would suggest that if we've done a 3.5 percent raise across the board for all other full-time employees, that, that Mr. Lyons is certainly worthy of, of the same.
I agree.
All right. Is that a motion?
It is. Second.
All right. You have a motion and a second. Any questions regarding giving the city manager a 3.5 percent pay raise? Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
Thank you.
Other proposed amendments to the budget. Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I want to, I'd like to increase the Nielsen Wheels budget by $2,000.
Is that in the form of a motion?
It is a form of a motion, Mayor.
All right. Let's, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions regarding that amendment? If not, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Any other?
Mayor, I have one.
Yes, Mr. Young.
I would like to ask the council's approval to provide the Murfreesboro City Schools Foundation with the $2,500. This is the second year that they've requested this, and it was not approved last year as our policy is not to approve the first-year rec, acqu, requests. This organization has zero overhead. Every penny goes back into the city schools foundation in the form of grants and parity money. We've raised a quarter of a million dollars in the last seven or eight years, and all this money goes directly back into the school system, but not the school budget. And I would ask a $2,500 stipend for that.
All right. Is there a second to that motion? All right. You have a motion and a second. Any questions regarding that amendment? Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Any other changes or amendments to the budget, what's been known as the tentative budget, which is now getting real close to being the budget budget?
[laughing]
Anything else?
Bueller.
There may be some other things that we come up with before the second reading. They would be minor in nature, but if you have other amendments or changes that you would like to make, please let the city manager know of those. All right. Then at this time, shall we vote on the budget as amended?
A move that we, or is it?
Well, Mayor, I think what the, if you would go to item 5C, we, the changes, yes, sir, the tax rate ordinance and then first reading of the budget ordinance, the changes that you've discussed this evening, we'll bring back for an amended budget ordinance next week.
All right. So then at this time, we'll consider for passage on first reading, an ordinance, the tax rate ordinance.
So moved. Second.
All right. You have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time, we'll consider for passage on first reading, an ordinance, the appropriations ordinance as an, as, with amendments? No?
No.
No.
Just, all right. Then we will pass on first reading, the appropriations ordinance. That's what it says. I should have read it in hush.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time, we'll consider for passage on first reading, an ordinance amending the Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 2 Administration, Section 2-16, dealing with special revenue funds.
Mayor, this goes back to what was just discussed about GASB 54. This allows us to decide what funds are appropriate as special revenue funds, such as the airport fund. They do collect charges and have outside revenue from state and federal government. They are not by definition a special revenue fund because of outside restrictions, but this allows us to make them one. We did choose not to put the golf course here. They do have outside charges. They're not fully funded by the general fund. But because recreation is being pulled into the general fund and golf is recreational in nature, we felt like it would be best to bring those in together, especially not knowing what's planned for the golf course in the future and how much more they may have general funds for.
So golf is not coming in?
It is coming in.
It is coming in.
With recreation. It's not necessarily required to, but all the other funds coming in have no choice. They are, they are funded by the general fund.
All right. Is there a motion then on first reading to amend based on these special revenue funds?
So moved.
All right. You have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time, we'll consider recommended budget amendment to reclassify the plant operator to master plant operator at the wastewater plant. Mr. Kurtzner?
Thank you. Operators take examinations that are different grades in the state. And just recently, the results of those examinations came out, and we had several employees that upgraded their certifications. And, and all those that we were aware of were included in the budget except for one. And we have a plant operator at the wastewater plant that now has a grade four certification, which, and he has the skills and abilities for a master plant operator. And we would recommend that he be reclassified to that as we have all the others in the similar circumstance.
All right. You have this recommendation of the water and sewer director. Are there any questions for Mr. Kurtzner?
Move to be approved. Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Consider recommendations of the Water and Sewer Board with regards to an ordinance amending Chapter 33, dealing with minimum monthly water charges and minimum monthly sewer charges. sewer charges.
Yes, we, and you have a memo in your packet, but basically is introduction to the ordinance in which the minimum allowance will be reduced from 150 cubic feet per month to 100 for 5/8 inch meters, and on all others, it will be reduced by 100 cubic feet, thereby everybody paying for an additional 50 cubic feet on 5/8 and an additional 100 cubic feet on larger meters. And that's in keeping with our cost-of-service study that we had in 2007, reducing those allowances down to increase our, our minimum over time. The dollar amount presently for the minimum bill will remain the same, and then this will just reduce the allowance. For, for instance, on the water, it's $8.22, and, and they'll pay minimum that, and then they'll pay for everything above that at the $2.74 rate.
All right, you have a recommendation of the Water and Sewer Director. Are there any questions for Mr. Kurtzner?
Move for approval.
Second.
All right, you have a motion and a second. Any questions on the motion? If not, please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance amending Chapter 33 Waters and Sewers.
Mayor, excuse me, that's what you just did.
Well, I wasn't clear whether they were my recommendations or just the ordinance.
I thought I read Chapter 33 dealing with minimum monthly charges, which was 7B, and I'm reading 7C.
It's one and same thing.
One's consider recommendations, the other's actually the ordinance.
All right, thank you. This time, we'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance amending the Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 7, Buildings, Section 712, dealing with the International Residential Code, and Section 714, 715, dealing with International Energy Conservation Code. Welcome, Mr. Holtz.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, council members. Item number eight actually consists of two items. The first item deals with the 2006 International Residential Code. The code presently requires a foam, foam board insulation to be installed below grade against the concrete foundation on slab-on-grade houses. It's our concern that the space between the foam board and the concrete foundation encourages, allows subterranean termites to enter the house without an owner's knowledge. We can reclass, or presently, Murfreesboro is classified as a heavy termite infestation area. We can reclassify it as very heavy. The code allows an exception that will eliminate the foam board requirement. So, we're recommending that we upgrade the city of Murfreesboro to a heavy termite infestation area. The second item deals with the International Energy Conservation Code. Presently, we have the 2000 International Energy Conservation Code adopted with 2002 amendments. The state has encouraged cities, architects, engineers, contractors to begin design and construction of commercial buildings using the 2006 code. We have also talked to a licensed architect and licensed engineer. They have informed us that there's so no significant cost increases associated with adopting the 2006 code, so therefore, we recommend the adoption of that code.
All right, any questions for Mr. Holtz regarding these recommendations?
You say there's no cost increase on either what you, before, is that what you're saying, or is it just the second item?
Actually, I could say on the first item, there's actually a cost reduction. Foam board wouldn't be required. And on the second one, there's no significant cost increases that were told us by the architect or engineer.
Was that in the form of a motion, Vice Mayor?
I move to approve it.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion and a second. Mr. Gilli, thank you. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time, we'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance amending the Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 2 Administration, Section 2-13, Schedule of Court Costs for City Court to Adopt Chapter 40 now of the Public Acts of 2011. Welcome, Your Honor.
Evening, Mayor, council members. I'm asking this evening for you to approve an amendment to our city court cost ordinance to include a new item of $13.75, and this item is being requested due to a new law that the state legislature recently passed that would require the court clerk to collect a $13.75 fee from every person that pays a cash appearance bond on their case without coming to court. And a cash appearance bond is, is just an amount of money that the court authorizes that can be paid in lieu of a defendant's personal appearance in court, and if the defendant fails to appear for court, the bond is forfeited. And the amount set for these cash bonds is generally the amount necessary to pay the court costs and a minimum fine. So, in order to cover that $13.75 fee and not lose money, we're asking the court, the clerk, the council to amend our court cost ordinance to add this fee as a component of those court costs. The fee is not going to be collected or increased, or increased the amounts paid on either red light camera tickets or overtime parking tickets. It also will not apply to, to seatbelt tickets and texting while driving tickets, but it would apply to all of our other cases in which a cash appearance bond has been set.
So who gets the money?
The state treasurer gets the money, and it's to be used for helping fund the TBI crime lab operations.
Is this, is this $13.75, is that on every ticket regardless?
There's already a-
Or is it on certain instances, or?
There's, there's already a $13.75 litigation tax that the state collects on virtually every ticket that's paid in city court, except for those where the people pay their ticket and don't come to court. And so, the state found that hole that they weren't getting their $13.75 from, and they passed this law to now collect it from those cash appearance bond tickets.
Judge, this is just pass through money. We're just collecting it on behalf of the state.
We're collecting it on behalf of the state. The clerk gets to keep 5% of the fee for collecting it.
The state's not really giving us an option on whether to do this, and I'm assuming they're, they're telling us to do it, and we're approving it because we're being told we have to.
If we don't, yes, if we don't increase our cash appearance bonds and amend our court cost schedule, I ran the numbers for last month, we would lose about $8,000 a month.
You're just a messenger.
That's right. This wasn't my idea.
Move for approval.
Second.
All right, you have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the Planning Commission to schedule public hearings to consider zoning requests, to rezone approximately 6.5 acres from OGR to CH and approximately 1.5 acres from RS-15 to CH located along Memorial Boulevard at Kings Ridge Drive, to rezone approximately 11.9 acres from RS-15 to RM-16 and approximately 10.7 acres from OGR to RM-16 located along Memorial Boulevard at Kings Ridge Drive, and rezone approximately 49.2 acres from RS-10 to RM-12 located along South Rutherford Boulevard. Mr. Adelot?
Thank you, Mayor Bragg, members of the council. During its regre meeting on June the 1st, the Murfreesboro Planning Commission considered and recommended the items that you just read for public hearings, so we need to schedule them for public hearings.
Ms. McGannan?
Mayor, I would suggest July 14th.
I got a quick question, too.
Mr. McFarland has a question.
If, just reading over, if they're both the same zoning application, why are, I guess, is, how come it's two different public hearings?
What we've got is a portion of the property is to be zoned to Commercial Highway and the remainder to be RM-16. I think that it's something that our legal department has advised us, that they wanted to go in this kind of direction when we see these type of applications, because the council may see fit to go approve one and not the other, and people who participate in the public hearing may want to support one but not the other, or may want to oppose both, or, but it gives them the option to, and it gives you a little bit more options as you consider these.
In the past, though, we've done one public hearing if we wanted to parse out after hearing the testimony, that's what we've done, as opposed to having two separate public hearings on the one track. That, that's kind of what's confusing me.
All right, you want to set the public hearings at July 14th?
That's my suggestion.
Thank you. Ms. McGannan?
We will set a public hearing July 14th.
Second.
All right, you have a motion and a second. Any questions on the motion? Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time, we'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance amending the Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 2 Administration, Section 2-16, Schedule of Court Costs for City Court to Adopt Chapter 40 now of the Public Acts of 2011. Welcome, Your Honor.
And what date is it scheduled for now?
It was initially set for June 23rd.
And are there other public hearings on June 23rd that remain?
I did not double-check that, Mayor.
All right.
I do not believe that we had any from the planning department, Mayor.
All right, you have this request to reschedule this public hearing. If it meets the council's approval, is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time, we'll consider recommendations of the Human Resources Director with regards to the Gatsby 45 OPEB actuarial valuation engagement letter July 1st, 2011. Mr. Goodman, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Bragg, members of the city council. Included in your packet is my recommendation memorandum and engagement letter recommending approval to the city council that the city utilize the services at Bryan, Pendleton, Swat, and McCallister, the city's actuary, in performing evaluation related to the city's obligation in connection with the Gatsby 45 and OPEB. You'll recall that OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits, and simply means benefits for retirees other than a pension. The fee from Bryan, Pendleton, Swat, and McCallister, as quoted, is a not-to-exceed amount at $15,000, which, by the way, was the same fee quoted for the service in 2009 to the city. This valuation is a requirement by Gatsby every two years in order for the city to properly ensure that accounting and reporting requirements for retiree health insurance benefits are made properly. You will remember that Gatsby accounting standards require that the city project, record, and report the city's net probable cost of providing existing employees with medical benefits when they become retirees, as if the city were pre-funding all of that expense. The accounting methodology is similar to that used to calculate the cost of providing current employees with pension benefits when they become retirees, even though the city has no such obligation to continue to provide this benefit. This is, of course, unlike its obligation, or the city's current obligation, that is, to provide pensions for pre-July 1st, 2010 employee hires. Please denote that costs for retiree health insurance were included in the recommendations and memorandum that you approved as a council in April. Since the city self-funds health insurance for employees, retirees, and their families, the recommendations accounted for approximately $818,000 of the estimated $10,400,000 in annual health insurance funding dollars, and are included in your proposed fiscal year budget information for the general fund. The Human Resources and Legal Department will be coming to you with a resolution in the very near future outlining the retiree health insurance benefits commitment for this fiscal year. I ask for your approval this evening, and thank you for your consideration of, of this request. At this time, I'll answer questions.
Questions from Mr. Godwin regarding this recommendation? If there are no questions, is there a motion?
I move to approve the recommendation.
Second. Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time, we'll consider for adoption a resolution authorizing the presentation to retiring police officers of their badge and a 40-caliber semi-automatic service pistol. Chief Crispin, welcome.
Mayor, members of council, good evening. You may remember that beginning in 1996, the city, this council, and the police department adopted a policy of presenting retiring officers who retired in good standing with at least 25 years of service with their badge, and at that time, a small service revolver that commemorated their years of service to the community. That was deemed appropriate by the council at that time because of the significance that a, an officer's service weapon has to him or her after they've served for a period of time. In 2006, we came back and asked council to update that original resolution by replacing that language for "small revolver" with a 40-caliber semi-automatic pistol. That's been the issue weapon for our police department for some time, and that change was made in 2006. Recently, I asked the city manager to consider approving another revision to the resolution that would extend this award to employees that retire with at least 15 years of service. That particular one comes to the front because I have some employees that are approaching retirement, one of whom has served us in a very high capacity and has done an outstanding job for this city, and will, will actually retire with 15 years of service, and I wanted to be able to recognize that service and commitment of that employee. Along with that change, I also requested that we remove the language that required the weapon to be rendered inoperable by removing the firing pin, and that we present the weapon and the badge in a commemorative box, something similar to what I have here, rather than on a plaque. Herefore, what we've done is we've taken those pistols and mounted them on a plaque and presented them to the employee at the time they retire, which really is not a very commonsensical kind of thing to do. It looks, it looks good at the moment, but no officer's going to take that home and hang that on the wall. So, what we envision here is, if you approve this, would be to put it in a box like this, have a suitable engraving on the top, and the city manager, his designate, be able to present that at retirement. So, those are the changes that are included in the revision of the Resolution 11-RO8 that's presented to you tonight for your consideration. Be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, any questions to Chief Crispin regarding this resolution?
Chief, I think this is a very reasonable and honorable request. I think it's one of the, the least forms of gratitude we, we can provide to someone who's given 15 years of service to the city, and I think it's a very appropriate thing to do, and I move that we approve your recommendation.
All right, the motion and second to approve the resolution. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time, we'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance amending the Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 2 Administration, Section 2-16, Schedule of Court Costs for City Court to Adopt Chapter 40 now of the Public Acts of 2011. Welcome, Your Honor.
Evening, Mayor Bragg, members of the city council. Included in your packet is my recommendation memorandum and engagement letter recommending approval to the city council that the city utilize the services at Bryan, Pendleton, Swat, and McCallister, the city's actuary, in performing evaluation related to the city's obligation in connection with the Gatsby 45 and OPEB. You'll recall that OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits, and simply
Herefore, what we've done is we've taken those pistols and mounted them on a plaque and presented them to the employee at the time they retire, which really is not a very commonsensical kind of thing to do. It looks good at the moment, but no officer's going to take that home and hang that on the wall. So what we envision here is, if you approve this, would be to put it in a box like this, have a suitable engraving on the top, and the city manager, his designate, be able to present that at retirement. So those are the changes that are included in the revision of the Resolution 11-RO8 that's presented to you tonight for your consideration. Be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, any questions to Chief Crispin regarding this resolution?
Chief, I think this is a very reasonable and honorable request. I think it's one of the least forms of gratitude we can provide to someone who has given 15 years of service to the city, and I think it's a very appropriate thing to do, and I move that we approve your recommendation.
Thank you, sir. Second. All right, the motion and second to approve the resolution. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.[1716.73]